Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting of November 10th, 2020. Introduction Posting of Notice Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing a notice in the office of the Township Clerk. And posting free notice on the bulletin at the municipal building on December 18th, 2019, where it has remained posted since that date. Regular notice appeared in a daily record and a New York Times Ledger on December 23rd, 2019, and was forwarded by fans other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 18th, 2019. Note council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Channel Access Channel 21 at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.parsippany.net. At this time, I'd like everybody to please stand for the flag salute, and I turn it over to the mayor. Can you please delete us in the flag salute?
That's my pleasure clerk. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'm going to go into the roll call. Mr. Carrify.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Here.
Ms. McCarthy.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
And Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Okay, also present our Business Administrator Fred Carr, Mayo Michael Soriano, CFO Juan Uribe, Township Attorney Jim Lot. We also have our Health Officer Carlo Glizia, and we also have numerous members from our District 1515. Council President, we have a quorum. May I please begin?
Please do.
Thank you, Council President. Upcoming meetings, November 24th, 2020 at 7:00 p.m., the regular meeting, and December 1st, 2020 at 7:00 p.m., the agenda meeting. Approval of minutes we have on for approval for next meeting, the agenda meeting of October 6th, 2020, the regular meeting of October 20th, 2020, and the special meeting of September 9th, 2020. Presentations and reports, Mayor.
Thank you clerk. I want to start with this, the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, every year we honor our veterans, and tomorrow is Veterans Day. So we stick with 11:00, 11:00 at 11 o'clock. So join, join us online at 11:00 a.m. with a virtual Veterans Day ceremony. There is supposed to be inclement weather tomorrow, but we've been monitoring it all week. It looks like it'll be later in the afternoon, so we should do fine at the, at the worst, what the predictions are saying now. You know how weather can change. We, at the most, we would get a drizzle, and I think we can handle the drizzle. So similar how the township celebrated Memorial Day earlier this year, the ceremony will be broadcast virtually, live streamed on Facebook Live, and broadcast on Video on the Go Channel 21, and available on demand through Video on the Go's YouTube page. And for, for more directions on that, you can go to the, you can go to the township website. The event was going to feature, as usual, speeches from various civic and spiritual leaders, as well as musical performances from Parsippany residents and students. That'll be for the online portion, and you, we hope you'll join us. It'll, of course, as a, as it has been for many years, it'll be emceed by our own Council President, Michael DiPiero, who is himself a veteran. What I'd like to add to that is that we've been using the same wreaths for many years, and we sought to get replacement ones. So I reached out to our friends at Par Troy Funeral Home, and they connected me with their florist, Hanover Florist, and we spoke with them on the floor, on the phone. They, I told them what we wanted, and I tried to give them a credit card, and they said, no, they would be more than happy and honored to donate the wreaths to our veterans and to the Township of Parsippany. So Parsippany thanks Hanover Florists for their, for their help with that. Okay, that's item two. Item three. Recently, this past October 25th, we lost one of Parsippany's fine activist citizens, who just gave so much of himself, Charles J. Beatty, or as everyone just called him Charlie. He passed away on Sunday, October 25th, at his home. He was 81 years old. He was born and raised in the Bronx. Charlie lived in Lake Hiawatha for 58 years, and for full disclosure, he was my next door neighbor for 15 years. We had different differing political opinions, which we would discuss regularly, but we always stayed friends and were always decent. Charlie was a very good person. Professionally, he was an offset printing professional and retired from graphic packaging in Piscataway after many years. What's notable is that Charlie was the past chief and president of the Parsippany Rescue and Recovery Squad. He's predeceased by his late wife, Alicia Morrison, who passed away on, I believe it was in 2001, and his late son-in-law, Michael Cole, who passed away in 2005. Survivors include his partner of 16 years, Margaret Calvato, his sons Charles, Joseph, and his wife Christine, Robert M., and his wife Debbie, his daughter Karen L. Cole, and his nine grandchildren, Brian, Alicia, Colin, Molly, Ryan, Ben, Lauren, Christopher, and Nick. Charlie's also survived by his many nieces and nephews, and one of his departed relatives that I always think of is Buttons, his little scrappy dog. Because even though Charlie was a big rough and tumble guy, he still had this tiny little dog that just brought so much joy to the neighborhood. So Charlie leaves behind quite a legacy of what he did in rescue and recovery, and was a mentor to so many people in rescue and recovery. All you have to do is ask them, and they will tell you. So just, I'm going to ask everyone to just please join me in a moment of silence as we say goodbye and honor this, our special Parsippany resident.
If I may add to that, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I go back all those years with Charlie, and he was truly a dedicated R and R guy, throwing throws, spent many, many, many hours every week at the R and R and training new young people into the skill sets that they need for R and R. He truly was an icon in Parsippany, and he will be missed.
Most people don't know that the man mortgaged, mortgaged his house to help start the rescue and recovery in Parsippany. That is uncommon dedication. So please join me in a moment of silence, and thank you, Mr. Council President. Amen. Mr. Council President, clerk, that concludes my report. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Next is Township Council. I turn it over to the Council President DePiero.
Okay, we have our Health Officer here. Give us an update on COVID-19.
Carlo, you there?
Everybody hear me?
Hey Carlo.
All right. Good talking to everybody. Thank you for the opportunity. I'll try not to hold everybody up as, because everybody knows I really love to talk. So overall, the, from a number standpoint, as of last night, the numbers that came in, we had a total of 1,066 ab confirmed COVID-19 cases in the Township of Parsippany. Sadly, I have to report that we have 83 deaths and our, you know, our heartfelt condolences to the friends and family that we have lost as a part of our Parsippany community. I also need to report that we have a total of 15,135 negative PCR tests. So our community has been busy going out and getting tested. Overall, we know and we've heard it, almost that nauseam over the past several weeks regarding COVID fatigue. Now is not the time to let our guard down. I know you've heard this a million times, but I just feel that it is necessary to go through just the basic parameters that we need to adhere to regarding social distancing, respiratory etiquette. Please stay, stay home if you're sick, wash your hands frequently, and most importantly, wear a mask. You know, as we also, as employers, we really should remind our employees that we, you know, we need to take the necessary steps to, in order to maintain a self and a safe and healthy work environment. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we do our part to try to minimize, you know, this ordeal that we're dealing right now from a global pandemic standpoint. But I guess I'll leave it open to Council President and anyone that has any questions.
I have a question, Carlo.
Yes, sir.
We're seeing that a vaccine is due at any time. Will our Health Department be involved at all in, in either inoculating residents or in selecting who should be inoculated first? I mean, surely our, our emergency squads come first, because they need to interface with the entire community. But besides that, is there any plan to have a plan?
Council President, there is a plan in reference to the rece, you know, receiving the vaccine as a part of the COVID-19 vaccine initiative. We will be getting vaccine. When? We don't know, but when that time comes, we'll be able to administer it throughout our community. It is tiered regarding as to, from a priority standpoint. We are familiar with that, and it is, you know, it is reviewed at a higher level with regards to who you can administer it to. I, I am staring at right now regarding how the, the level of risk. So I mean, you're pretty much looking at congregate settings or, or ideals. So you're looking at your nursing homes, assisted living facilities, you know, your prisons and university students. Then you have a, a similar or a lateral tier with people that are have an increased risk for severe illness, which are elderly. Unlike our H1N1 initiative about 10 years ago, where the elderly were not a priority for COVID-19, the elderly are. And so, you know, and then in so on, it goes down with, you know, from a priority standpoint. But, you know, first responders are up there as well. So when that time comes, you know, we are obligated to make sure that we, you know, you get your first responders vaccinated first, because ultimately we need them to help the community. So, yep, there is a plan.
Okay, thank you.
Carlo, it's Paul Carrify here.
How are you, sir?
How you doing?
Good.
Appreciate everything you do for us.
Thank you.
I know those totals that you had given us, those are the totals from the beginning. Do you have any updates on, you know, the last couple of weeks, maybe two, on how many cases?
Yeah, I mean, this was not a good week, and I mean, let's just go back about seven days. We're looking at, and I'm just doing some basic math right now. In the last seven days, you're looking at 140, about 144 case increase in just this past week. It's a lot of cases. It's a lot of contact tracing. It's a lot of interviews. It has definitely put a strain and tried my, my department. They are, you know, still in good spirits, but for the most part, you know, we are, we are in good shape. That is high. I don't know how that equates to over the past several months, but these are numbers that we were getting, these were numbers that we were getting in April and May.
Is that all over the map as far as age?
Yes, absolutely. And it, there's no, there's, you can't pinpoint it to a specific area, to a specific, you know, whether it's gender or age group, but it is all across the map. I mean, you may attribute it to the availability now. I mean, it is readily available. The state is pushing out that, that people do get tested, even if they are asymptomatic. There has been a large push with the, with the RA's, with the rapid antigen tests, which, you know, hey, come on in, in 15 minutes, we'll find out if you're, you're positive. But for the most part, you know, although we still have to treat that as an initial positive, we still.
Yeah, I just, I just, I don't want to cut you off, but I just have one more question is, are you finding a lot of these positive tests are, is there a majority of them coming back with people that are asymptomatic, or we're not?
No.
Since they're testing a lot more people right now, I, you have to figure that the, you know, the rates are, there's going to be more positives, because there's a lot more people getting tested. I'm just wondering, are there a lot of tests coming back asympt, you know, people are asymptomatic?
Based on our, you know, our contact tracing managers, we, you know, we talk regularly. We do get a, and I don't know what the percentage is, it is a small percentage of asymptomatic people that do come back positive. For the most part, that's a result of them being in contact with a positive case, and then they, they feel obligated to be tested. And, and the one thing we always say is to please consult with your primary care physician, because sometimes you, you actually, you don't want to go too early to get tested. The general rule of thumb is about a 72-hour lag time from exposure to getting tested, because, you know, it would be more of a true, yeah, a true diagnosis.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi Carlo, this is Emily Peterson. Oops, sorry.
Sorry, Emily. I was wondering now, of those cases that recently tested positive, how many were hospitalized and with any deaths?
We, no, we have not, to my knowledge, from a hospitalization standpoint, it's, it's, I'm looking right now, and do not quote me on it, it may be, maybe a couple that are hospitalized. Regarding fatalities, I don't recall any fatalities reported this week.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Emily.
No, that's okay. I have a couple of questions. First, thank you, and thank you to your department for everything that you are doing. We all appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
So to Paul's point, do you have any indication of whether the percent of positivity rate is increasing that would account for the higher number of tests being administered?
No, I don't. We're, and I'll just be honest with you, we're somewhat stuck in the weeds right now, dealing with contact tracing. In reference to analyzing this, it'll be more on a regional or a statewide level. From a positivity standpoint, you know, the, I guess you want to call it the rate of transmission. I mean, I think we do get regional reports weekly that I might be able to look at and forward to you. But overall, I mean, we're just looking at, just on a strictly case by case, the numbers are increasing. I mean, to break it down, that would take some time.
Sure, and I can fully appreciate that in the, you know, if in the middle of the fire is not the time. I was just, you know, if there's an opportunity to look at the percent positivity as a benchmark of increase that, to separate that out from just a number, you know, the greater number of tests, I think it is helpful, but obviously not an emergency situation.
And it will, we do, at the regional level, we have our regional epidemiologists that do provide us with a breakdown. I think we get those reports every Friday. So I don't want to give you last week's report, because it's, you know, it's, it's yesterday's news. I'll definitely look at it, and I'll reach out to you if I see something that, that seems to kind of, you know, but again, it's going to be on a regional level. It won't be, you know, at a zip code level, so.
Sure. So I got an email from the Parsippany Troy Hills School District today that Parsippany High School is shutting down in-person classes because of the number of positive cases that have been found there. That's true and confirmed, yes?
If that's what the superintendent said, then that's what the superintendent said. I mean, it's, they're, it's their decision regarding closure. I mean, you know, and, and I usually have something here that I pretty much memorize verbatim, but, you know, regarding communicable disease of outbreaks investigations, we're the primary agency to conduct these disease investigations, which may include contact tracing. We work in collaboration with the schools to identify close contacts and their contact information to assist with contact tracing activities. We, as the Health Department, will assist in determining the best course of action with each individual case. Obviously, as you, you're well aware, there are a lot of moving parts during a communicable disease investigation that require school personnel to work in collaboration with us, and that's at the local region, at regional and state level, to facilitate contact tracing and provide a fact-based assessment that can be utilized when making decisions regarding return to school, isolation, quarantine, and closure. So, and to answer your question, Councilwoman, if we're closing it, there's a good reason to close it.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree. And I also understand that there have been multiple cases that have been at town hall as well. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So. I, I'm just curious in terms of keeping the public safe, keeping our employees safe, to your point earlier. It's, correct me if I'm reading into it, but it sounds like maybe mask compliance wasn't at 100%? Is that, was that behind, it sounded like reminding everybody to wear a mask at this point. There might be more motivation there just from, you know, being a good citizen.
We, we have put a strong emphasis on, you know, trying to minimize the COVID fatigue. Does that answer it?
Yes. I guess my question is, what would trigger a town hall closing to the public or closing the building for two weeks?
I, I do not like to speculate, or the only thing I could say is, every day brings new cases, and we have to evaluate it on a case-by-case basis. There's no, there's no if this, then that. We really have to take a look at the, you know, at the information that's given and to make that determination. And, and the one thing I can assure you, in what transpired over the past week, everybody, again, a lot of moving parts, we acted swiftly and made a, made a, a decision based on fact, which wound up possibly protecting, you know, the majority of our, of our colleagues. So that, that was ideal.
I do appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure it's clear to members of the public who are coming in to conduct town business that they are well aware of the risks that the building may pose.
Oh, yeah, and if, if that were the case, we would obviously provide the appropriate notification. But as of right now, at this given time, I think, and Mayor and Fred, correct me if I'm wrong, the lower level, I think, is, is still closed to the public, and the, the upper level is still open. So I may stand corrected, but I'm pretty sure that's where we're at.
And is there a, is there like an air filter between the two build, between the two floors?
That I would not be able to answer for right now.
Right, so you could see where I'm going. I mean, and this is for everybody's.
Yeah.
You could see where I'm going. I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Carlo.
Okay.
Carlo, this is Janice McCarthy. Hi, and thank you. You know, what are your concerns about the building just closing the lower floor?
Okay.
And not the entire building? I mean, you know, what, what concerns do you have about that? Did they find out how many people are, what's the contact tracing they're doing now in the building?
The, again, the information that was provided to us and regarding the, and I'll be very general, because this is a public forum, and I do not want to, I want to be certain that I do not single out any specific colleagues and/or departments. Based on the information that was given, and after conducting a thorough investigation, that is the result. The result of what you see now with regards to the temporary closure of the lower level is as a result of the previous case and/or cases that we determined needed, you know, specifically certain departments that needed to close down.
And just those departments? There's no, no concern about the public going into the building or the upper floor, the employees on the second, on the first floor?
If there was, we would probably, we would have closed the whole building.
And what would prompt that?
I do not like, and again, to reiterate, I wouldn't, I do not want to speculate. I have to base everything on the, on facts. So I can't just say, very similar to how schools are, where everybody say, well, if we get X amount of cases, we need to close the schools. That, that, that is not, that's a play on words. It all has to do with, you know, obviously laboratory confirmed cases. We like to adhere to it on a case-by-case basis, and due to fluidity and the variations of, of patient histology, you have contacts, whether they're symptomatic or asymptomatic, the family dynamic, if there's an epidemiological link, as well as guidance and clearance modifications. So I mean, you know, I, I don't think you're going to get a straight answer from me regarding speculation. I can only base it on the facts that are given me at the, at that present time.
Are these employees that dealt with the public?
I, I'm not going to, you're, you're, you're putting me in a spot right now that I don't think I'm comfortable in answering. The only thing I can tell you is that the downstairs is closed for a reason, and the upstairs is open for a reason.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Carlo, it's LaRita Grignani.
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. I too want to thank you and your staff for the work that you've been doing these past, these past months.
Thank you. They deserve it.
Going forward with Ms. McCarthy's questions, I too am concerned about the upstairs. I know, and I, Miss A, who's downstairs, may go to lunch with Miss B upstairs. Have we, have we been doing any tracing of those, of those incidences where they're going to lunch together, or they're even outside, maybe having a cigarette or a cup of coffee together, or whatever? And when, when we closed the downstairs, and I realized it was thoroughly cleaned, and then the, the facility is not going to be opened, it's going to be closed till the 18th of the month. Are we going to be doing any staggering of departments? I mean, I'm thinking of departments that have more than maybe three people, four people in, in an office. Are we doing any staggering, or would it be, be wise to start doing staggering? Or we're just going to wait until a case pops up, and then we're going to go forward?
That would be an answer more for administration, but regarding, and I think that was done in the early onset of the outbreak.
Yeah, I, I don't mean, I don't mean to step on Carlo's toes, but to answer the council member's question, we have already begun staggering on the, on the, on the main level.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Okay.
And to follow up on that, Councilwoman, is so, if you remember from your text messaging last Tuesday at about 9:30, we shut down the first floor. That was eight days ago. Based on, we're going to use the term which has been overused over the last eight months, an overabundance of caution. This provided Carlo and the Health Department an opportunity to individualize contact tracing of those people down there. To the extent that we did that conversation of, who do you talk to, who do you hang out with? What's the communication between the upstairs and the downstairs? The downstairs is in their own little bubble. There is some movement of the public up and down, but if you've been to town hall, as you know, we have stickers on the floor, hand sanitizer all over the place, signs saying mask up. When the public interacts with the staff downstairs and upstairs, there's screens. You know, if you go into planning and zoning, there's a, there's a barrier between the public and the people. If you go to get a uniform construction code permit, you know, there's a great big glass window, and you slide your stuff in and out of the door. So, you know, we, we took proactive steps, and we're continuing to do that now. And where, as the mayor said, we, we started the conversation last week about going back to A squad, B squad, not because of what happened in this building, but what's happening statewide, nationwide. As people get, as Carlo mentioned the term COVID fatigue, get a little lax, had to remind everybody, get this one again, it's like it's lax, now's not that time. And we've taken those proactive steps, or I will tell you, for fact, the IT guys, there's only one guy working in the building. You know, they've totally gone to remote from home, and we're doing that in each and every department, and it's, and then down in construction. It will put us behind even further, but we need to protect our employees and our public. You know, from, you know, I'm not allowing the employees to go out to do inspections in the public, even if they're not allowed to go downstairs. You know, we've locked them down. We've got some pushback from some developers and some people like that concerned, but, you know, it's not worth getting somebody sick.
Also, keep in mind that Fred Carr is in constant contact with Carlo, and Fred and I meet daily to review COVID and what's going on in the township and with township operations.
Any other member of council? Okay, Carlo, I'd like to thank you for your time and your report. I appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody, for your support, and we'll definitely get through this.
Thank you, Carlo.
Thank you, Carlo.
Have a good night.
Okay, at this time, anything from our Township Attorney Jim Lot?
I have no report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lot. Moving on to our Business Administrator Fred Carr.
Yes, Council, in the absence of me speaking, I've invited my friends and neighbors from Ohio to do all the talking for me.
Yes, Council, in the absence of me speaking, I've invited my friends and neighbors from Ohio to do all the talking for me. They didn't bring me pesca, so they're in trouble.
Mr. Administrator, is it okay if we start Steve Proman here? I'm going to lead off. Thank you, Mayor, Council, Business Administrator. It has been, it's rather obvious to say that everyone has been affected by COVID, as you've just gone through it in some great detail. And we spent a lot of time with the administration and council getting entitlements for 1515, particularly redevelopment agreement, some pilot financial agreements, RAB authorization. We went to the county of Morris. We did all of that in 2019 and into 2020, and lo and behold, this hit. We reached out to the administration through Jim Lot at the beginning of this year, when it was clear that what we were trying to do and what we had worked so hard to bring forward was no longer financeable. And we have been going back and forth in a very cooperative iterative process with the administration and its consultants to come up with something that as closely as possible adheres to what we had originally agreed to build, with the understanding that we would try to keep all of the infrastructure promises that we had made in that original entitlement. And understanding that there would have to be some adjustment in the actual mixed use project. So we're here tonight to go through what those changes are. And then I think it'll come back to me and I'll wrap up with a brief look at the actions that we would need to be taking in order for that to occur. So that's the topic paragraph as to why we're here. And with that, I'll turn it over to Max Dorn at Claremont.
Great, thanks, Steve and Mayor, Fred, Council. I just want to thank all of you guys for your time. Did everybody hear me okay? You're set, okay. I believe Mark had a PowerPoint. Does he have access to share that screen?
I don't know if that's provided quite yet.
I'm not sure. Are we able to pull that PowerPoint up on the screen to present or has the council received a copy of that to reference?
They were wanting to give me the ability to share, but it's, it's not doing that.
Yeah, Jim, do you know, Jim Lot, that Dave Miller was supposed to give that to us, to Mark?
No luck?
Looking into this right now.
Okay. Do you have, are you able to do it, Colette? Do you have our file?
No, I don't. But I am seeing if they can pull it up on the screen right now.
Thank you.
Go ahead and try now.
Yeah, see here.
All right, there it is.
There we go.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, just to reiterate, you know, what Steve had said and previously about the impacts of COVID. You know, Stanby are partners from Ohio who've owned this site for over six years, been working through multiple administrations with the council, with the professionals, with the administration, to get to, for all intents and purposes, an as-of-right application that was submitted in February of 2020. As you know, this global pandemic has just, it's, it's caused the devastation to especially the retail and the office market. And over the last six months, we've really been working closely with architects, engineers, planners, the city, our team on trying to develop what is, what is the next way that we can go and pivot this project and still maintain all the goals of the underlying redevelopment plan, but have something that can break ground in 2021, that can still promote the public benefit of Parsippany and the surrounding community, that will still maintain the mixed use nature of this project, but will enable us to be financeable. Our partner, Mark Paschmidt, will go into further detail, but I just want to give you a little context in terms of how we got to this iteration and where we are today. Mark, if you go to the next slide?
Sure.
So this just gives you a brief impact in terms of the immediate office market and how COVID-19 has impacted that. Parsippany, you know, historically and over the last 10 years, and especially prior to COVID, already had over a 30% vacancy rate for their office product. This building, 20 acre site located in Parsippany, was a portion of that as well. So those, those effects of COVID-19 are continuing to compound in a negative way. And then if you go to the next slide, Mark, this talks about the impact to the retail industry. And it's the same thing in terms of these brick and mortar stores not being able to survive as a result of social distancing, as a result of the requirements that are mandated by CDC or the state governments or municipalities in terms of how businesses can operate. You know, as we continue to learn more about COVID and you see these, you know, cases continue to increase, it, it's something that we saw at the early onset that we need to go and be able to adapt to in a way that's going to be financeable. And Mark, if you go to the next pro, next slide, this really outlines specifically how COVID-19 has impacted our project. Initially, we had a two-phase project with multiple public and infrastructure, you know, off-site improvements, including a DOT tie-in to alleviate some of that east or westbound traffic going around the Wendy's, which we're still maintaining, as well as the pump station improvements for the sanitary connection and the water main extension, the water main improvements that are controlled by Southeast March County Utility Authority, which are also serving our, our project from a water utility standpoint. All of those improvements are being maintained and Mark will go into further detail into some of these programmatic changes. But this slide in particular shows you that these tenants here accounted for about 30,000 square feet of, of space, which is 50% of the phase one, that we had letters of intent out for, all of which were rescinded as a result of COVID. So we went from having 30,000 square feet of tenants that were interested in the project. We were trading paper back and forth with them to, to none. And our turning point was really to understand, how do we go and modify the redevelopment plan, our redevelopment agreement, our financial agreement, while still maintaining the important and underlying goals of the underlying mixed use redevelopment plan, still maintaining all of the public improvements and infrastructure improvements as I previously described, in a way that's still going to allow this project to be successful, but more importantly, get out of the ground in 2021. And Mark will go into a little bit further detail about the plan and the programming and the changes that were presented. And then we've been working closely, will continue to work closely with the mayor, with the administration, with the professionals, Evan Sues on the planning side, as well as the impact of fair share and the affordability requirement. And, you know, this project does account for about 15% of the credits associated with this round of the affordable housing settlement. So we understand and want to continue to promote those positive impacts of this project by making these changes, because what was originally perceived in February is not financeable. The retail market just isn't there and lenders aren't willing to, to provide financing for these types of projects. So I'm going to hand it over to Mark. He'll go through some of the changes and the programmatic changes within each phase. But again, I just want to thank all of you guys for your time and your support and working closely with us over the last six months to really try and work out, you know, a modified program that's going to work for this site, still maintain the goals and values of that underlying mixed use redevelopment plan. Mark, I think you're on mute.
Very nice. Well, I want to thank everybody as well for the time tonight and certainly Max and Steve jump in as I go through these slides. This is exciting. I don't get to dress up much anymore, so appreciate the opportunity. As everybody recalls, the approved plan, which we show on the left here, just to kind of recap where we were and where we had submitted our site plan application earlier this year, early 2020. The as-of-right approvals that Max had spoke of was 407 market rate units, an additional 15% affordable credit, 67 of those total, 34 of those were onsite. So it was a total of 441 total units. I believe everybody's aware of that number. In addition, we had 100,000 square feet of retail and 40,000 square feet of office. There's, as Max mentioned, the, the retail and office right now, especially in the phase one component of this in the, in the near future, is not financeable. So what we are looking to do, what we've been working on literally since February and March of this year, was to try and, and figure out how we could maintain the mixed use components of this project, yet get started in 2021. So what we've done is reduced the retail square footage by 40,000 square feet and we've had to eliminate the office component of the project. We've replaced those with roughly 57 additional units. 49 of those are age restricted and remaining are onsite affordables. So the way the request of modification looks, we would still be at 407 market rate units. We would add 49 age restricted units, that's 55 and over. Our affordable units would change to 75 total units and, and 42 onsite. So that's a total of 498 units onsite, 60,000 square feet of retail. So the market rate units stay the same. What we're adding is age restricted to minimize the impacts to the, to the school district, yet the additional affordable units are all onsite for those additional, additional units. So graphically, what does that look like? Hopefully, everybody can see that previously, this was our phase one. We've now have pushed that into phase two for a number of reasons. Number one is to give the, the retail market the ability to, to come back. And, and we are still very bullish on retail at this location, just not at this time. So our phase one now is this figure eight building you see on the right in red. That's 100% residential slab on grade, four stories. It is 263 units, 243 of those are market rate, so 20 affordable onsite in phase one. What this does is, as I said, preserves the ability to keep the mixed use component on the phase two portion. The WUNR has been modified to a Main Street configuration. We still have the ability to close it on either end on weekends or special events to turn this particular traffic over to 100% pedestrian traffic. We see that happening a lot. Actually, I, I don't see it, but I understand it's happening a lot in your state now, where towns are shutting their main streets down to let restaurants put tables and whatnot out in, in the public right of way. Unfortunately, what we've been planning to do all along, it just seems to be much more receptive to that now due to COVID-related issues. So we, in phase two, we would have some residential units slab on grade on this side and on this side. The retail portions would be in blue on either side. The, the WUNR Main Street configuration here and then 100% retail on this side. So then moving to the upper floor plan, graphically is what we're, we're talking about. This is four floors of residential in phase one. Phase two, we would have four floors slab on grade in this location and this location. Here, we would still be doing the vertical mix of units. So we would have residential over top of the retail component here. These were all in the light brown are, are market rate units with the associated affordable component. Over in front of the retail, fronting Route 10, that's where we are proposing to place the age restricted for legal reasons that perhaps Steve Proman can get into. It needs to be separated from the rest of the residential projects. So we are showing that in this configuration here. So this is new to the plan, adding two additional floors of residential over the retail on Route 10. We now have a single parking deck in this location that we will build during phase one. Parking for, parking, parking for phase one, there will be some temporary parking here until we're able to build this. We will work through the specifics of that with the town professionals and we will present that to the, to the council at the appropriate time. But that is the, the basis of the modifications we are requesting and graphically how it looks. From a 3D standpoint, our architects have done some, some modeling. So we've got four different views for you to kind of give you a spin around the, the project. This would be the residential component here in this figure eight. The amenity courtyards are on grade, so we will have a veteran impervious jaculation. That will enhance that. The blue here is the retail on the ground floor. The purplish color here would be the age restricted residential above. The parking deck to the back, this is Route 10 here. This is the driveway jug handle here. This is the Hanover parcel on this side and this is Delta Dental. So here you've got the, the residential slab on grade here and here. And then this is the residential component above the retail in this, in this area. This would be the Main Street WUNR configuration. So I'm just going to spin you around here. This is a, the northwest view. And once again, this is Route 10. This is the driving jug handle. This is Hanover and this is Delta Dental. You get a little bit better view of the, the WUNR here at this area. This, you start to see the, the differentiation between the residential on top of retail and the aggregate residential in phase two. You can see this residential is lower than this one and the same here. This is four stories slab on grade. And then this is the residential component above the retail. This is also four floors slab on grade. Hanover, Delta Dental, Route 10 and the driveway jug handle. I think I've got one more for you. And then this is the final view to share, once again, from the rear of the project with, with Hanover on this side, the driveway jug handle here, Route 10, and then Delta Dental, our neighbors over on this side. And then I, I'm going to let Steve talk a little bit about the, the process, the schedule. And I'm going to jump back in and give everybody an update on entitlements. We've continued to work through entitlements throughout 2020 on non-Parsippany and Hanover related improvements, which I'll give you an update in just a second.
All right, you're going to go to the entitlement page? Yeah, there you go. Oh boy, that's a little small for people, but I, I'll be very brief here. Tonight is November 10th, that's in red, upper left. We need actions on the 24th and the 15th. That is because of the rule that we cannot straddle ordinances from year to year. I've discussed that with Jim Lot. So in order to amend the redevelopment plan, the financial agreements, both by ordinance, in order to refer the redevelopment plan to the planning board and to authorize us to go back to the county improvement authority for the RABs, we need those actions on the 24th, the ordinance actions in first reading. Then the planning board would take its action December 7th, a fateful day. And then we would come back for second reading at the town council on December 15th for final adoption of the ordinances. And also, that's when we would adopt the resolution. for final adoption of the ordinances, and also that's when we would adopt the resolution authorizing the RDA amendment. Uh, then a stopper periods would be, would run into the second column. Uh, then two things would happen simultaneously. Uh, the, the bond group would go back to the county improvement authority, because we'd have to go back to the state of New Jersey and get the local finance board to once again approve this. That'll happen, uh, December to February, and simultaneously, uh, Mark and Max will go through the, uh, the site plan uh, application as a right approval, all with the goal of, as everyone has said tonight, in the green, uh, getting us in the ground summer of twenty one with a, a roughly two-year construction period, phase one opening in twenty three. That's the, the rough schedule. Mark?
Yeah, so Steve had mentioned the amendments, uh, to the redevelopment plan, and that is something, we've got some minor changes to the redevelopment plan that, that we plan. I plan to work hand in hand with the town professionals, that is Susan, uh, to work through those changes. Um, we're gonna have to do that in, in short order to hit the November twenty fourth, as well as Steve Proman, uh, working hand in hand with, with Jim Lot on the, on the various, uh, agreements, and we're committed to, uh, to do that for sure. So then on the entitlements, um, I do want to give everybody an update. We, we have received our, uh, DEP general permit, which is, which is really a big deal. It, it includes our, our, our wetland delineations, um, our, uh, wetland encroachment for the, uh, the jug handle work, the flood calculations, the storm basin, all that has been blessed by NJDEP. And the way engineers did it, they, I believe it was roughly fifteen feet from the perimeter of our project in, which is where our setbacks are, they figured that would be, um, uh, be green or, or pervious. So I think they took the worst case scenario for this DEP now application, which gives us the ability to change whatever is inside there. So according to Langen, um, we are good on NJDEP. Uh, regarding NJDOT, uh, we did get reviews from, the initial review back from DOT. We have submitted that back to, uh, back to them. Langen has submitted that back to them, and they are currently well past their ninety day review period of our first resubmital. So we got their comments, we addressed their comments, we've resubmitted, and we're awaiting the next round of comments. This is a big reason why, um, we pushed the NJ, uh, the jug handle tie-in, uh, off-site work till, until after phase one, but before phase two. And we are still committed to do that, and we are still pushing, uh, NJDOT to move this as quickly as possible. Uh, COVID certainly hasn't helped the response time for NJDOT. With regards to, uh, water, NJDEP has approved our water main extension. In order for that to happen, SMUKA had to, uh, approve it and forward it on to DEP. So SMUKA has approved our water allocation and has approved our, our, our water main extension. So that work is ready to go in conjunction with phase one. Uh, as you know, we are not served by precipity water. Uh, we are served by, uh, by SMUKA. Uh, Morris County has approved our soil movement, and the other thing that's not on here that I will bring up is that sanitary sewer is currently into Hanover Sewer Authority, who serves the project, not precipity. Um, we're, we're waiting on comments from their, uh, their consultant, I believe, Matt McDonald, uh, before we can forward those plans on to NJDOT, because we do have some work in the right of way. Uh, so that is, is ongoing. Um, but as I said, we've been working on whatever we can to move this project forward, knowing that we still needed, uh, accommodations from, from precipity uh, to, to make these modifications we spoke of tonight. So let me see if there is. So just quickly to, to summarize, um, as Max has indicated, COVID has thrown a monkey wrench into, uh, the retail and office market, both globally, regionally, and locally, and it certainly has impacted, uh, our ability to deliver on, uh, any retail or office square footage in, in the initial phase here. Um, the project that's designed can't be forward without the, the modifications that, that we are seeking. Uh, the additional, uh, age restricted units are simply to offset the loss of the eighty thousand square feet of retail office space and corresponding revenue stream that comes with that square footage loss. Uh, the eight new affordable housing units that were required for the additional units will all be onsite. Um, amendments require the year and, uh, amendments are required by year end twenty twenty to facilitate. We are committed, excited, and hopeful for a construction start for the summer of twenty twenty one. The initial slide we showed was the existing conditions. We are very excited to finally tear these buildings down and start, commence construction on this project with the phase one projected to open summer of twenty twenty three. But I believe that is, uh, that is it. I will leave it on one of these other uh, projects or, or project slides and open it up for questions.
Okay, any, uh, questions from members of the township council or administration?
Loretta Gragnani, um, good evening, Mark. Uh, where does this new proposal leave us with the pilot program that was initially approved for this project?
Hey, Loretta, this is Max. So our financial consultant will be working with Mike Handley, who works, uh, as a financial consultant on behalf of the, uh, township. Uh, we expect to have a revised project cost and revenue analysis over to him tomorrow from our financial consultant. So similarly, how it worked out in the past, uh, Mike Handley will be preparing his analysis and he's, his presentation on behalf of the township. Um, and that, that is underway as well, based on this modified program that's Mark Wenman presented earlier.
Does that have to be done by the twenty fourth of November?
Yes, the intention would be for him to have that information available prior to or at the twenty fourth meeting to present.
He's going to present the new pilot proposals that night to us?
I don't know. I can't speak for, uh, Mike Handley, but I know he will be receiving information. He's received information from us on the previous iterations, and will be receiving information on this iteration, uh, tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Jim Lot, Mr. Lot?
Yes, Councilman.
A question for you, actually, in reference to this or both sides. These, uh, additional forty nine units that would be for age restricted, um, will be something in place in the agreement that those units, uh, must remain for age restricted?
Uh, right. Um, the council, if it wished to move forward with the modified proposal, could, uh, require that the, um, a, age restriction be in the redevelopment plan, the redevelopment agreement, the financial agreement, that's the pilot agreement, uh, as well as, um, recorded, uh, against title. Um, understand that, uh, you know, that restriction on a later date could be lifted by, you know, future governing bodies. But we could, we, we could, uh, um, restrict the project by the agreements that I just outlined.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
So, Mr., uh, Jim, I'm sorry, Jim, just to be clear, so we as the developer owner could not go and modify those from a restrict, an age restricted unit to a market rate unit without some type of, um, approval from the governing body. That's correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Proman.
Yes, Jim.
Um, what, what, what assurances does the township get or can receive that phase two of the project gets built?
I, I think, uh, I, I think the, the way we had set it up last time, and I don't anticipate a change, um, is that we're not allowed to go ahead, uh, with phase two until we complete all the infrastructure improvements. Um, and, um, yeah, yeah, I know the mayor had wanted us to go ahead with the traffic, uh, as, as part of phase one, and I, I think the best incentive we have is that, uh, is that financially, they've been carrying this for six years. They, they need to do both phases of the project in order to make it work financially. But Jim, I think, I think the same triggers, if you will, I'm not anticipating, I mean, we're going through that now. You'll see the draft agreements. But we're not anticipating, uh, the carrots and sticks that were in there last time in that regard changing.
Right, so it, it would be unlikely then that the developer here put in all the infrastructure and not go face it?
That, that's exactly right, because you have forced us to put in, um, you know, I'm trying to remember the exact amount of the bonds, but you know, many million of bonds, and we don't get back that, that cost until we go ahead with phase two. Uh, the, the point being that you allocate that infrastructure partly to phase one, partly to phase two. If you make us pay for it before we can go ahead of phase two, if we don't issue the phase two, uh, bonds, and then, you know, we're, we're carrying all that cost. So we, we did it on purpose. We, we mutually incentivize the alignment. So that, does that help?
Yes, I just wanted counsel to hear that again.
Yep.
As, as I recall, um, when we were gonna do the offsite improvements in phase one, your payments to the township, um, you are going to be deducting the cost of the roundabout offsite improvements, uh, from your payments to the township, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, there's
Now, if you're postponing
Sorry.
that roundabout, um, how does that affect your payments to the township?
Yeah, the, uh, the, the way the pilot works is that the annual service charge kicks in as soon as you have a certificate of occupancy, and then the pilot gets allocated, uh, between the portion that the town keeps and the portion that goes for debt service. That, that's correct, councilman. None of, none of that's going to change.
I just, we're, we're certainly not postponing, um, the construction of the, the roundabout. It's the same schedule as we had previously, uh, committed to.
And, and I was gonna add that we, we are the ones obligated to purchase that bond. So while technically it's debt, it's, it's essentially equity, because it's the developer's money that goes to buy that bond to fund those improvements.
Which you deduct from our payments ongoing.
Well, what's deducted is the debt service payment, but the bonds themselves and the equity that's going to purchase that will be purchased by us as the developer. There's nothing that's changed from a phasing standpoint in terms of when the, that infrastructure would be, uh, installed, uh, from the previous iteration, the original plan that was submitted in February to this plan. Those public infrastructures include the sanitary pump station enforcement, which will be included in phase one, the water main extension and improvements in the loop for the SMUKA in phase one, and the DOT jug handle tie-in, which we've already gone past our initial ninety day approval of, and which will be required to be installed prior to building permits issued on phase two. So again, nothing has changed in terms of the financing mechanism, the financing structure, or the scope of work associated with those public infrastructure improvements and those traffic improvements to alleviate the traffic issues that are existing there today.
And, and, yeah, and councilman, I, I just want to add, you're technically correct that there's no, legally, there's no way to, to, to call, uh, to, to bifurcate this into two types of pilots, if you will. But the way you arrive at that number, I don't want you to think that we are literally taking away from dollars that otherwise would have gone to the town. The first thing we do with Mike Handley is arrive at what is the town's need? What is, what is the necessary amount that the town needs to make? Then what we do is we literally add to the pilot the amount that goes to pay the bonds. So technically, those two things get added together, so you're not technically incorrect that it's coming from the share of the pilot. But, but in terms of how it's put together, we first figure out how much the town needs. We negotiate that, we agree on that, and then we add the debt service to that piece, if that helps.
Okay, well, thank you. My understanding of the pilot, though, is, um, and the way, the way it is constructed, a lot of the money is at the tail end and not at the front end, uh, when you have fully developed your project. Um, so I guess my question will be to Mike Handley is what would we have anticipated in revenue from Stanbury in phase one before, and what will we expect in revenue from Stanbury in this modified phase one?
They'll have those numbers, council. Yeah, they'll have those numbers. That's what, that's what Max and Mark have been talking about that we're working through. They'll have them.
If they're not the same number, is there any way you can match them so they will be the same number?
Well, councilman, I think the biggest, uh, the, the analysis that we're doing here is that as we're deducting forty thousand square feet of office and forty thousand square feet of retail, there are certain costs and revenue assumptions that go with that, based on the modified plan and the existing plan. The addition of fifty seven additional units, forty nine of which are market rate but age restricted, eight additional affordable units, that goes opposite to the deduct that we're receiving for the modified program. So those numbers will never be exact, but again, we are looking at what that true impact and that delta is. Keep in mind, though, under the existing plan of the four hundred and forty one units with a hundred thousand square feet of retail and forty thousand square feet of office, that project as it is today is not financeable. So you look at, you know, you're looking at three different scenarios. The project as it was originally contemplated, the project as it is today, under the four hundred and forty one units, a hundred thousand square feet of retail and forty thousand square feet of office. And what we're proposing here, which is an increase in the number of, of, uh, residential units, with that incremental increase being, uh, for affordable units as well as age restricted units, and a decrease in the amount of commercial and retail space. So we will go through that analysis. We've been working on that analysis, and the town's financial consultant will come up to his conclusions on how that impacts the pilot based on the cost and revenue assumptions. But there will be a delta in that, in that analysis, just based on the programmatic and, and based on the programmatic changes that are being proposed. Another point to make on that is that the pilot consists of two different metrics. There's a minimum payment, which is stipulated, as well as a percentage of the estimated gross income. So if the grow, if the, your income expectations outperform your pro forma, the town has a benefit in terms of what they're going to be receiving under the pilot payments. So you're creating a minimum standard, but you're under both, but that doesn't to say that if you outperform, outperform your pro forma, you still have the avail, ability to go and, and have additional funds. There's no cap on that. And I think that's a very important part on this financial analysis as well, and how we're comparing the two.
Okay, one other question, if I may. The, uh, age restricted fifty five plus units. If you make those smaller units, age restricted, they don't need two bedroom or three bedroom. One bedroom should be sufficient. Um, and they could be even smaller units, so the people can subdivide the room later and, and have children in there. So what are your plans for those age restricted units? How big, how many square feet will they be?
I don't have an exact answer for you right now, councilman, but that is something that we will have provided for you in the near future. Again, uh, working with Jim Lot, as well as our attorney, on making sure that these restrictions, uh, are mandated, they are enforced, uh, by law, is something that's extremely important to us, and, and we understand the concerns about the impact to school, and that's something that, uh, we'll be very, um, you know, we, we've taken into consideration as we've developed this modified program, and we will continue to consider as we further develop this. So we will get back to you on that specific unit mix, and, um, I understand your concern.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the council?
Okay, thank you, guys, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, I do not have a report. Township offices committees. Okay, seeing none, moving right along. Engineering report. Green Bank Road Safety and Improvements Project. The project was substantially completed. Only minor punch list items remain to be completed. A section of new guardrail still needs to be installed once underground utilities are moved. No council action required. Simpson Avenue retaining wall project. Simpson Avenue retaining wall project construction is scheduled to start in a few weeks and will be completed in November. No council action required. Veterans Park cover replacement project. Bids were received for the Veterans Park cover replacement project and the pre-construction meeting has been scheduled. The concrete box cover is to be ordered and construction will begin once the delivery date is identified. No council action required. Veterans Park cover replacement project. Bids were received for the Veterans Park cover replacement project and the pre-construction meeting has been scheduled. The concrete box cover is to be ordered and construction will begin once the delivery date is identified. No council action required. Sheffield Street drainage project. Repairs were made to the pipe and the rear yards were restored. Punch list items will be completed by the end of the month. No council action required. Mount Tabor Street improvements, phase five. The Mount Tabor Street improvements, phase five, construction has started and continued to end of and will continue to the end of the year. No council action required. Roadway design projects. The following projects are in design, putting Stone Heights Road improvements and the various cover repair project. These projects will be bid once design documents are finalized. No council action required. Community rating system CRS program. We continue to work with our consultant, the NJDEP, to get back into the CRS program. This program provides discounted flood insurance policies based on the level of activities in which the township participates. The work will continue through at least the end of the year. No council action required. Stop signs. Canton Road at Flemington Drive, Florham Park Road at Flemington Drive. Stop signs were requested at Canton Road and Florham Park Road and Florham Road after intersections with Flemington Drive. And investigation was conducted by the office and the police department and is recommended that stop signs be installed on Canton Road and Florham Road after intersections with Flemington Drive. Amendments to Chapter 4 or 5, Section 23 are required. An ordinance has been prepared and would need to be adopted by council. So then we're moving on to age correspondence. We have two items, best practices inventory and attack sale results. Those items are just for your information. If you have any questions, you can go ahead and ask them now, members of council. Okay, seeing no questions, we're going to move right along to bids taken. October 1st, 2020, yard waste transportation disposal recycling. October 7th, 2020, third-party billing for ambulance services for EMS. October 15th, 2020, SCADA system improvements, phase two. October 21st, 2020, well-drilling and installation services, replacement production well, 21-R rebid. To be taken. November 18th, 2020, no recreation sanitary sewer improvements. Quotation proposal qualifications, none. At this time, I'm going to go into the public hearing. May I please have a motion for the public to open up the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Cariffy. Second by Mr. Grignani. Roll call Mr. Cariffy.
Yes.
Mr. Grignani?
Yes.
McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, so now at this time, we're going to go into the public hearing. We will check to see if we have any participants. So I'd like to remind the members of the public that you will have five minutes to speak any topic. This is not a back and forth. You will just speak and after that council will answer your questions. Looking at the participants here, I don't see that we have any participants. Anyone from the public like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Let's, may I please have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Cariffy. Second by Mr. McCarthy. Roll call Mr. Cariffy.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiro? Mr. DePiro?
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, moving right along to ordinances. At this time, I just want the council member of council to review the ordinances. And if there are any questions you have, you can go ahead and ask the administration.
I have a question.
Go ahead, council president.
On A1. Parks and Forestry is moving to the DPW. That's Jimmy Walsh. Department of Recreational Services, you have three different divisions there. Community Affairs, Division of Recreation, and Division of PAL Support. Are those promotions for anybody or additional funds required?
No. Councilman?
Okay, then we will find out soon who those people are.
So council president, you had previously asked some months ago about some like a job description and titles and things like that. And when we revised this ordinance from a previous one, I had a chart which I sent to the council earlier this afternoon. I should have sent it before, but I thought I had, but I did not. You see the Division of Community Affairs, the case, Mike Stefano's, Joe Plecha and Recreation and the PAL with Sam. What we're trying to do is put all the recreational opportunities for township residents under one roof, if I could. One group of control. Of course, the easy part with Jimmy Walsh and the Parks and Forestry guys, incentive public works. That's traditional in three other municipalities that I've been in, you know, if you're cutting grass, you work for public works somehow or another. And if you have a chance, look at that. Once you see that chart, it's self-explanatory. This is a draft, okay? You know, this is work in progress, but this is our vision, make it better in the future for the township residents.
Okay, I'll go back and look for the chart. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just sent this afternoon. It's multicolored. Looks like that. I can't see it. My picture's in the way, but anyway, it's a three-colored chart showing, you know, what people are going to be doing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So effectively, this is Janice McCarthy. Effectively, we have now two departments, the Department of Public Works and the Department of Recreational Services. And then Parks falls under Public Works and Community Affairs, Recreation and PAL fall under Department of Recreational Services. Is that right?
We're doing away with the Department of, you know, Parks, Forestry and Recreation.
Yeah.
More aligning them with what they really do. Grass cutting, public works, one department, recreational leisure, those kinds of things, another department.
So there'll be department heads for the Department of Recreation Services and the Department of Public Works, and then there'll be division. Did you call them superintendents to the Community Affairs, Recreation and PAL?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one on 202031. And that's Edwards Road that we're talking about there. And as I recall, that's the flooding. Edwards Road is coming from the Whippany River as opposed to New Road flooding coming from the Rockaway River. So in this case, we're just dealing with the Whippany River flooding on Edwards Road. Is that correct? Did I lose somebody?
No, I was making sure that my mute was. So what we have here is looking for drainage across there to get it off the road, not from the river. This is just pounding on the road. And we're looking to get the water off the road, which we're afraid is going to freeze up in the winter, which we spend a lot of salt at that part of the world every year because it's it's a flat road.
Yeah, according to Justin Lee's, the flooding on Edwards Road is caused by the Whippany River, as I recall in his explanation. And the flooding on New Road is coming from the Rockaway River, which I didn't know before. That was something new to me. I thought we had a common flooding problem.
No.
So these are two different issues and two different solutions, apparently.
Two different rivers.
Two different rivers. Okay.
Okay, moving along since no other questions. All right, going on to the non-consent agenda, resolutions. R2020-204 authorizing a local government emergency fund grant. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Peterson. Second by Ms. Cariffy. Any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion. Roll call Mr. Cariffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, R2020205 approving the assignment and assumption of and consent to transfer of the developer's agreement with Morris Corporate Center Six LLC to May Parsipony LLC. Motion to approve the above resolution, please.
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Cariffy. Second by Ms. McCarthy. Discussion?
I just have a question on that. This transfer to May Parsipony LLC, they're assuming all of the obligations that we had with Morris Corporate Center?
Yes, that's correct, councilman president.
Okay.
All right, roll call Mr. Cariffy.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Motion passes. So R2020-206 approving the developer's agreement with Morris Corporate Center Six LLC. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson. Second by Mr. Cariffy. Roll call Mr. Cariffy.
A question first. Is this related to item number two? Is 2020205 and 2020206 related? Yes. Come on, wait.
But one is the transfer of the developer's agreement and one is the actual development space. That's correct. There's a pro execution of developer agreement and then a separate required for assignment and assumption of the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Cariffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now moving along to the consent agenda. If you can just take a look at, you know, items A, resolutions, and B, applications, quickly review. If you have any questions, you can go ahead and ask them now, please.
Have a question on number two. Where we're authorizing the use of public rights of way by this telecommunications company. It says existing and new telephone poles. I'm okay with that as long as they're telephone poles and not cell towers that they're constructing. Do we need some further wording in there?
I mean, what I read, they were going to be the same type poles. And they said they were going to be made of no other materials, but.
Well, our cell tower ordinance requires that they find existing facilities and have to justify it to the township if there are no existing facilities available. So I'm just wondering if, when they say new telephone poles, they really are talking about telephone poles and not cell towers?
Councilman, that is correct. If you look at the page, the other page, install fiber optic cables and related facilities on existing utility poles within the public right of way.
Okay, I just want to make sure no cell towers get in there.
No, no, no. That's on page two of the resolution, the resolve that install fiber optic cable on existing poles.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, moving on to item C, approval of payroll and bills list. CFO Juan Uribe recommends authorization for payment. One authorized payment of the November 13, 2020, regular payroll estimated at 1.6 million each. And number two, payment of bills from voucher list of November 1st, 2020 through November 3rd, 2020, estimate totaling $3,686,062.35. Now, please have a motion to approve the authorization.
I have, excuse me, Colette, I have a question.
Sure.
On the bills list, Maritain Health, there's $208,000 stop-loss. What is that? Can anybody explain that? $208,000 stop-loss payment?
Yes, that is a payment of a line of insurance that covers casualty, a line of casualty insurance with the township. It's a premium stop-loss.
It's a premium. It's not a payment. It's a premium?
It's a premium.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
An umbrella policy?
Sorry?
Is this like an umbrella policy that we have?
Yes, sir.
They pay above a certain amount?
Yes, sir. It's like an umbrella type of insurance, covers after a certain threshold.
Yeah, okay.
So what do we have? Juan, do we have a new contract yet for Maritain?
At the moment, we're having conversations. We're going to have a meeting at the end of this month to kind of finalize all of the assessment that we're making at the moment of the different types of insurance.
We have been talking over the past three years about reviewing our options for health coverage other than a self-insured plan. And I know that that was being looked into. Is there any information available on that?
All of those options are on the table at the moment, and I know that the avenue state have had a closer conversation with them in those regards. That at the moment, we are exploring all type of possibility that is trying to either maintain the same level of services that we have at the same price or decrease the amount of points that have to be dispersed in order to maintain the same level of service.
Thank you.
So councilman, I can answer, and for one is that we are right now scheduled tentatively to discuss the renewal on the 17th at 10:00 in the morning via Zoom meeting. Although we have all our proposals, we have all our data, and we're looking at that. And I hope that we can reach some kind of a recommendation for the council as to accept the plan or an option from the 24th. We have some time. We have placed the carriers on notice, so if we choose, we can. But we haven't made that decision yet for a recommendation to the council with which will affect our insurance rates next year. As you all know, part of the conversation is we're required by law or collective bargaining agreements to provide equal to or better than coverage if we change our current existing plan. And that's a very tedious program when you're dealing with a collective bargaining agreements. Many times, it's unfortunately not about the math, but about the cross-checking to make sure that those benefits maintain the same.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can I please have a motion to approve the authorization?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Cariffy. Second by Ms. Peterson. Roll call Mr. Cariffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiro?
Yes. Can we go back to resolutions for a minute? We moved too fast. Do that for me.
Okay.
Nobody else asked a question, so I feel maybe I'm stupid, but a number three. What does SCADA stand for?
So SCADA, it's the software, it's the water plants distribution software. It uses the water facility to manage all the pipes and pumps. the water facility to manage all the pipes and pumps and those things.
Okay, for the water department, thank you.
Water department, yes, sir. That, that is the software system, hardware system. You do a water plant, it looks like, there are always pictures, it's very, very, very high-tech, like if you take a visit, you'll be surprised. They can control the pumps, they can control the water towers, the pumps, just from a computer console right there.
I found that tour, but I didn't know what the computer was.
Yeah, it's called a scanner.
Anything else, Council President?
No, thank you.
You got it. At this time, for the public, we're going to be moving into executive session. We will be coming back into public so that we can adjourn the meeting. I don't anticipate that action will be taken tonight, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lott. So no action will be taken for the public, just so you guys are aware. So at this time, we're going to go ahead and read the resolution, and then we'll go into the executive session. Executive session resolution, whereas open public meetings, Act PL 1975, Chapter 31, 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the township councils of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the township council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege, conveyance of vacant land to Amaducci Block 428, Lot 322, Lakeside Drive, and whereas the minutes will be kept unless the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved by the township council of the township, Precipity Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting. Can I please have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Motion.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Cariffey. Roll call, Mr. Cariffey.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Okay, we're now going to adjourn into executive session. If we can go ahead and please go into the executive session mode. To reconvene into open session, please.
Make a motion.
Well, no, we had, we had Grignani, we had Grignani that made the motion. Ms. Grignani, I want you for a second.
Second.
Okay. Okay, motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Cariffey. Roll call, Mr. Cariffey.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
DePiro.
Yes.
Okay, we're now in mode, in open session. Could I please have a, adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, I see that, Ms. McCarthy beat you past the top. All right, so, so we have a motion made by Mr. Cariffey, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Cariffey.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
And Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Okay, everyone, adjourned. Thank you for your time, and thank you to the public. Everyone have a good day.
Good night.
Good night.
Can I help you, that one?
Yes, happy Veterans Day.
Happy Veterans Day.